Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and bring our July 17, 2025 Regular Board of Supervisors Meeting to order. Reverend Parrish, are you here? Good evening, ma'am.
Gracious God, we come to you this evening and we ask your presence with us. A special attention, Lord, for there are hot topics coming up this morning. There are going to be heated debates on both sides, and, and Lord, we just ask for your calming presence among us, that each person would be heard, that they would hear with and share with understanding, and all who would hear would be receptive, and the best decisions for our county will be made by our supervisors. Lord, let them listen to you, and you guide our thoughts, our words, our deeds, and our actions, and let us act like good citizens. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please stand and join for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Green, if you could do roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bowen.
Here.
Mr. Walls.
Here.
Ms. Phillips.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Doss.
Here.
Board members, can I get a motion to approve the agenda, or are there any amendments?
I have a motion to amend.
Mr. Bowen.
I move that we move line items 12B and 12C and make them 7A and 7B, and that we remove line items 11C and D.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Phillips, do you have a motion?
Yes, thank you. I move that the public portion of this meeting stop at 9:00 PM to allow the board to enter a closed meeting, and that the closed meeting terminate at 9:45, so that the board has time to certify the closed meeting prior to 10:00 PM, when the meeting shall automatically be adjourned, and to continue any and all matters that have been, that have not been disposed of on July 17, 2025 Agenda until Friday, August 1, 2025, 9:30 AM at the Historic Courthouse.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Do we have any discussion, board members?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilson.
Ms. Wilson and I have a meeting in Williamsburg that morning at 9:00 AM. I also have another appointment in Williamsburg at 11:30, and a follow-up.
Either Friday in the evening or Thursday, the 31st?
Uh, yes, I don't, I don't have anything. Well, yeah, no, 31st, if we do it in the evening, I shouldn't.
Can we do that at 6 o'clock?
Sure.
Ms. Phillips, would you amend that motion to July 31st at 6:00 PM? Is everybody else good with that?
At 9:00 or 9:30?
6:00 PM.
6:00?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
At 6:00 PM.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I do want to amend my motion to read that the, uh, the follow-up meeting will be held on Thursday, July 31st, at 6:00 PM at the Historic Courthouse.
The motion was amended. Do we have a second?
Second, and I appreciate that, Janice. Thank you.
Do we have any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Board members, next on our agenda is Hole in the Wall discussion, and if you'd bear with me just for a minute, I'd like to start. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming out. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay. No? Okay, let me pull it closer to me. Okay, is that better? Okay, thank you. I added the Hole in the Wall to the agenda tonight to allow myself and other board members time to address last week's actions. The Hole in the Wall has always been an emotional topic, and tonight is especially emotional. I ask everyone here tonight to be professional and respectful. My integrity and character have been questioned and challenged many times over the last week because of the decision that I made to move forward with the county attorney's recommendation. The decision of the board to move forward last Thursday was 3 to 2. Mr. Bowen and Ms. Phillips were both opposed. I'd like to address the emails that Mr. Cassell sent. On June 2, Mrs. Hubbard sent Mr. Cassell an invoice, and he responded on June 3 with questions concerning the charges listed on the invoice. Shortly after receiving the email, Mrs. Hubbard emailed me and asked how I wanted her to respond. Due to the relationship between the county and the Hole in the Wall, the questions that I had concerning the 75% pump and haul costs, and that Mr. Cassell said that he would pay the rent quarterly, I reached out to the county attorney and requested that she prepare the response. The county attorney agreed, and I advised Mrs. Hubbard. Each time I spoke with the county attorney, reference to the response, I relayed that to Mrs. Hubbard. Ultimately, no response was sent. Mrs. Hubbard is a generally good person, dedicated and loyal employee, who does a phenomenal job for the county on a daily basis. The non-response was in no way a fault of hers. I feel it's important to note, the closing of the restaurant had nothing to do with the invoice amounts, except for the rent. The rent was due on June 1, per the lease, without demand and without notice. There has been no board approval to change that, and actually, this board has never discussed it. All of the amounts on the invoice can and could be questioned, except for the rent. For years, discussions concerning the Hole in the Wall were emotional and have caused a divide in our county. Over the years, the county and the tenant have grown to not trust one another. Discussions routinely revolved around the lease and around the continued costs to the citizens of Matthews. It's been such a repeated topic of conversation at our board meetings. Many citizens are tired of hearing about it and just want the issues resolved. The board has worked tirelessly over the last year and a half to resolve many of the issues. We have discussed the notice of violation from the Health Department. We've discussed the septic issues. The septic issues should have been addressed years ago. Areas we discussed were the drain field. It's not been used for years. It's paved over, and we were told probably not usable for the future. It appears the tanks are cracked or leaking. We discussed if the platform sitting on top of the tank caused the cracks. We then explored possibly purchasing a piece of land and having a forced main system installed. We discussed the engineer reports. We discussed the lack of building permits for work that was completed. We discussed the lack of the county performing some required inspections in previous years. We discussed the lack of county oversight during previous years. We discussed possibly selling the building itself. If the decision was ever made to sell the building, the boat ramp and the public parking would not be sold. In March of this year, we presented the tenant with an offer of compromise, which consisted of the tenant would have paid to replace the septic tanks. The tenant would have agreed to pay all pump and haul, pump and haul costs. A five-year extension of the lease would be given at a fair market value, which would have been determined by an independent company. The tenant would have been allowed to keep the platform that currently has the two refrigeration units on top of it. There would have been a clean slate, clean slate from that point on. The county would not have pursued any previous concerns up to that point. The tenant refused the offer, which was their choice. The tenant wanted to purchase the property. Those discussions started with the offer of compromise, which transitioned to board discussions of possibly selling the building to the tenant, which transitioned into board discussions of possibly listing the building for sale. The public hearing tonight is so we can gain input from the public on if we should sell the building. The following is a breakdown of what has been spent on the Hole in the Wall. Next gen, $68,000. Exterior deck, $20,044. Miller's Septic Service from FY18 to FY21, $99,597. Engineer services, $39,703. Pump and haul costs from FY21 to FY25, $205,044. Outside law firm, $277,288. For a total spent from FY18 to FY25 of $709,678. When you deduct the reimbursements from FY24, correction, FY21 to FY24, of $74,255, and you deduct the cares money that was used of $88,044, that leaves a total impact or cost to Matthews County of $547,379. Many feel the meals tax paid by the restaurant covers any of the costs the county has incurred. That, that's difficult to say if it did or didn't cover the monies that were spent. Meals tax revenue for FY25 totaled $370,669. For FY25, 46 businesses in the county paid into that meals tax. Code of Virginia 58.1-3, secrecy of information, does not allow us to find out how much meals tax was actually paid by a business. I realize the decision to lock the doors and terminate the lease was harsh and immediate. Knowing this, why was it my decision to move forward with the county attorney's recommendation? The tenant did not pay the rent, which was due on June 1, which triggered the county attorney's recommendation. Had the rent been paid, we would not be discussing this tonight. I considered that pump and haul costs, pump and haul would cost over $400,000 for the remainder of the lease. Or buying a piece of property and installing a forced main pump to pump the septic to another location was estimated to cost between $550,000 and $750,000. I considered the selling of the building. I considered the safety of the building. I considered the relationship between the county and the tenant. I considered the considerable amount of time that has been spent on the issues, and I considered the effect these issues have had on the citizens of Matthews. Years have been spent on trying to come up with some type of resolution, with nothing ever being resolved. Even though the decision was immediate and harsh, I chose to move forward with the county attorney's recommendation, which ended the lease. The tenant does have an option to enter into a licensing agreement and reopen. So what are the positives? The lease was terminated immediately. The tenant can enter into a license agreement, which will consist of new terms, which will allow the restaurant to reopen, which has been ongoing for many years. I considered the totality of everything involved, taking into account all of the information that I had in front of me, and I truly believe in my heart, even though harsh and immediate, the right decision was to move forward with the county attorney's recommendation. I'm going to add one more thing before I finish. I was elected to do what I felt was best for this county. At no time while I'm seated on this, seated on this board, will I ever vote for something just because another board member did. I truly believe that this was a decision that I should make. I know that everybody disagrees, or there's many that disagree with me, but I thank you for allowing me the time to explain my actions, and I will continue to represent the county and our citizens with honesty and integrity, and I truly appreciate that. Board members, who would like to go next?
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Phillips?
Did you ask for our comments?
Yes, ma'am. Who would like to go next?
Okay. As Mr. Doss has commented, I did vote not to do this. However, by the time I got to vote, it was too late for my vote to register. I was in the minority. I happened to be at the golf course with 34 kids at camp, and when he called me, I couldn't take the call, and I told him I'd call him as soon as I could. So when I did get home, I did send an email saying that I was opposed to this because I did not see the urgency, and I thought it was important that we give written notification of our intent on not to do this so quickly. I saw no need for the urgency of doing this at all. So that was my biggest objection. I don't think that the time was necessary at that time. We have spent a lot of time on this, and I do want this county to move forward. I'm tired of moving backwards. We have a lot of issues in front of us, and I can list them, because this county has some big issues. Declining population, aging population. We need to diversify and increase our revenues. Our schools need help, and the list just goes on and on. So the time we've spent on this topic has been very disconcerting at a minimum. So my concern as voting against it was that I don't think it was properly done. I think we should have used our legal system if that was the case, but certainly a written notification delivered to the proprietors would have been more appropriate.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Next? Mr. Bowen?
I was one of the two opposing this action. I want to start by saying that, excuse me, Tim Doss is one of the best men I know. I do not question his integrity whatsoever. I have known him for years. He stepped up 20 years ago to help me in a situation that threatens me and my whole family, and I have always been grateful to him for that. He was the chief deputy in Gloucester at the time. I don't question the integrity of anyone on this board. I do have a difference of opinion. So what I'd like to do is go through what I have prepared. Each of you can download this from the meeting portal. It's under the other documents. I have prepared a document, and I'm asking the, to start out on the Seabreeze leases. If, uh, the video could get that up on the board, please, on the screen. Okay. So what I want to do here is to just start to give some background and history that I don't think many people in the county know, and quite frankly, I didn't know this detail. What I have done is I have gone back and located all the leases since 2001. I have placed excerpts in this document that you all can see, and the entire leases are available on the Matthews County website. So this lease was signed in 2016, and it didn't take effect for about 18 months because the county was fixing the septic system. This was after the Seabreeze Restaurant. And so the lease took effect in June 1, 2018. This is a legal contract, and we just cannot change the terms of the contract because we're tired of pump and haul or we're tired of some other term. This contract has an expiration date of May 31, 2033. If Hole in the Wall were to exercise all their options, and of course, now with this action, there's a question about whether the contract is enforced or not, but if the courts end up telling us that it is in effect, it can be another eight years. So we have to weigh what cost will we face in the next eight years. The Seabreeze Restaurant was constructed on a concrete pad at ground level. It was subject to flooding, and the lease for Hole in the Wall required the building to be torn down and a new building built, and that building was to be elevated out of the floodplain, which reduced the flood insurance. And all the leases that I'm getting ready to, if you'll turn to page 2 of that document, all the leases since 2001 have been basically the same. The only thing that has really changed is the, of course, the name of the tenant, the monthly rent, and it changes every five years. But other than that, not too much changed. There's one thing that has been consistent in every lease since 2001, and that's the language of what is the tenant obligated to do, paying the county towards the operation of the septic system. And every lease says that the maximum per year the tenant is required to pay is $3,000. So the county has been accused of subsidizing a private business, but, but this is the lease that every tenant had, the provision since 2001. So if you, I can't see the screen, but at the top of page 2, I'm showing the rental income to Matthews County, and you can see that for the first, oh, almost 15 years, the Valdrigges had this. At one point, the Valdrigges assigned the lease to the Galusys, but the total rent paid to the county over a 15-year and three-month period was $80,025. The lease, it is somewhat comical, but that's, that's what the supervisors had done for 15 years, and none of us on this board were part of this lease. We have been, we have inherited this lease, and we've been trying to deal with it. So if you look at the lease with Hole in the Wall, they pay $675 a month, which is a nominal increase, but they were required to pay $138,000 towards the construction of a building. That $138,000 is 172% more, well, 172% of the rent the county had received in the prior 15 years. So in addition to rent, they have made a significant payment. The county owns the building. Whether the lease is terminated now or in '33, that building belongs to the county. The county didn't pay towards the construction, and that too is a benefit. So if you go to the top of the next page, you see the lease beginning April 2001. You see it's for $375, well, $315, and then if it renews, it's $375. If you go down to the next page, page 4, at the top it says additional rent. There you see for the septic, the requirements shall not exceed $3,000 per year. If you go to the 2006 lease, that's another five-year period, but it says it's under the same terms and conditions as the previous lease. So we move up to the top of page 5, and we have an agreement to extend the lease, and then the 2011 lease. You go to the top of page 6, you see what the rent is, and at the bottom of page 6, again, you see the septic, shall not exceed $3,000 per year. Shall not exceed $3,000 per year. In 2013, the Valdrigges assigned the lease to the Galusys. And then we have the lease with Hole-in-the-Wall. And I'm not going to go into that. It's laid out there. But I do want you to see on page 12, the top of page 12 is a photograph of the Seabreeze And I'm assuming that's up there by now. That shows the flooding that frequently happened at Seabreeze. The next page shows you the damage from that flooding. This is the condition of the Seabreeze restaurant when Hole-in-the-Wall was negotiating with the county to take over the lease, to have a new lease. The building had been heavily damaged. There was flood, mold and mildew. The top of the next page shows more mold and mildew. And the top of page 15 shows the problem with the electrical system. The top of page 16, you can see the condition of the carpet in parts of the restaurant. Mold and mildew all over the carpet. That was the condition. So turn to the top of page 17. So what the Hole-in-the-Wall restaurant did is they salvaged the roof from the building. They raised the roof, and then they built the new restaurant underneath it, all on their nickel. So people need to understand that. I'm not saying everyone needs to understand that from their... When we talk about this situation. So if the projector operator could go to the very top of this document, emails regarding the closure of Hole-in-the-Wall restaurant. Again, if you all want to see these, you can download them now or certainly whenever you get home. So I... Why I'm describing here in the emails are not my legal reasons for opposing this lease. This is what I would call equitable reasons, or what I call honorable reasons of why the county should not have terminated the lease. If we... Let's just go through the emails. If we start on the top of page 4, you can see the email to Mr. Cassell on June 2. And it says, "The Pump and Hall billings have unfortunately needed some updates." So he writes back the very next day, on June 3, which is at the bottom of page 4, that he's prepared to drop off a check this week, once they get the Pump and Hall figures correct, because he disputes some of the Pump and Hall figures. So on June 10, which is the top of the next page email, the county emails Mr. Cassell back. The county says, "Please excuse the delay in response. The county will have a response to you addressing your concerns by Friday, June 20." The problem is, the county never responded beyond that. They never gave Mr. Cassell a correct invoice. They never told him what he should pay. Now, he knew what the rent was, but for at least over the past four years, the history had been, and it was an informal one, it wasn't required in the lease. The lease required him to pay it on June... His rent, June 1. But there was this informal process that had been relied on or had been adopted between the county and Mr. Cassell for at least the previous four years, where the county prepared the invoices and sent them to him, because it included Pump and Hall, it included the flood insurance bill. There may have been other expenses that came in that he had agreed to pay under the lease. And so the county would send him that. And in the previous four years, within a day or two typically of receiving the email from the county, he went up and paid the bill. So here's the county saying, "We will address your concerns by Friday, June 20." Well, on June 20, the county doesn't... Hasn't responded to Mr. Cassell. So the accounting clerk sends an email to the board chair, says, "Does the board have a response for Mr. Cassell? I would hate to continue to make him wait to hear from us after telling him we would have one today." The clerk was notified by the board chair that this was going to be... Well, that he would... This was on a Friday, that he would contact her on Monday. During that time period, this was turned over to the county attorney. And so when the board chair told the clerk that he would respond on Monday, she reminded him, "I just wanted to bring it back to your attention. In the timeframe, you said we would respond." So on June 23, a Monday, the county attorney sends an email to the attorney for Hole-in-the-Wall, to Tommy Norman. And the county attorney points out, "Mac has patiently waited for a reply from the county." And she says that, "This is something that you and I should be able to work out. Please let him know that you and I are working on this." So now the county attorney has stepped in and said, "We're going to try to work out these figures. Let Cassell know that you and I are working on it." So on the 23rd, when the accounting clerk gets a copy of that email, she sends an email out indicating that she has updated the Pump and Hall figures, and she thinks she has them straight now. So this is June 23. So this is the first time the county apparently believes they have correct Pump and Hall figures to pass on to Mr. Cassell. The 23rd of June. And so here's Mr. Cassell's email on July 1. "You stated you were going to get back to me on June... On the 20th of June. I've waited, and since it's July 1, I thought I'd reach out again to see if I can come by the office and drop the county off a check." "I haven't heard anything since the last correspondence, so I thought I would check again." This is his second response, July 1. So Ashley, the clerk, sends that to the chairman and says, "This was my worry when we didn't provide a response to his email by the date that I was told to provide him." Just bringing it to your attention, basically. And the response from the chair is that the county attorney is aware of this. And then the clerk on July 1 sends an email to Andrea, to the county attorney, and to the chair. "Could someone please keep me in the loop on the amount that should be collected? For what I would be greatly appreciative." And she needed to know that, because she's the accounting clerk. So here, on July 1, the accounting clerk, a month later, doesn't know what is the proper amount to bill Mr. Cassell. What is the proper amount he's supposed to pay? He knows the rent he's supposed to pay, but how about the rest of it? Apparently, no one in the county knows, or at least no one has told him. No one has told the accounting clerk. So on June 8... July 8, I'm sorry, the county attorney, who was handling this matter with the attorney for Hole-in-the-Wall, sends a letter to the accounting clerk. "I have been asked to let you know what to do about the Pump and Hall costs at the Hole-in-the-Wall. I recommend that you proceed as you always have in terms of invoicing Hole-in-the-Wall. That would mean follow the procedures that you've done for the last four years, sending them an accurate invoice, and then getting payment." That is July 8. On July 8, the accounting clerk is asking for directions. "Should I respond to Mr. Cassell's most recent email with these figures? Or has that information already been passed along to him through his attorney? I would like to clarify with Mr. Cassell that I was not ignoring him by any means, but I was waiting for a directive from the board, who to my understanding was waiting for advice from the county attorney." So then the board chair sends an email, just a few minutes later, to the clerk, saying, "Well, you know, we still have a question about what is the accurate Pump and Hall figure? And so hold off on sending out an invoice." So here on July 8, the county still does not know what the proper amount to bill for everything. Again, they know what the rent is, but they don't know what the Pump and Hall is. So on July 9, we get a third email from Mr. Cassell. And he goes through, saying, "Well, I sent you one on June 3. I sent you one on July 1. He says, "I did not hear back from you on the 20th, so I sent you another on July 1, checking again and requesting information so that I could come in and pay the county. Consistent with my lease and addendum, I remain willing to pay the county what I owe." That's on July 9. On July 10, at 9:18 a.m., the county attorney, the next day, the county attorney on July 10, 9:18, sends out an email to the five supervisors, saying, "Hey, I have a letter attached that is a notice to terminate the lease, and you all let me know if you are in agreement. If three of you are in agreement by consensus, we're going to execute this termination." No board meeting, no open meeting to discuss it, no closed meeting, no notice to me other than this email at 9:18. By two hours later, at 11:16, the county officials and law enforcement is at Hole-in-the-Wall and have shut them down. So what I would like to know, one of the questions I have, is what happened? The email from the county attorney on July 8 to the clerk said, "I recommend you proceed as you always have in terms of invoicing the Hole-in-the-Wall." That was on July 8 at 10:49 a.m. Just about two days later, on July 10, at 9:18 a.m., is when we get the email from the county attorney, saying, "Do you agree to shut them down?" So what happened in that two days? What happened in that 48 hours? There was no discussion with me as a supervisor about any of this. How did this decision get made, from telling the clerk to send an invoice out, to two days later, shut them down? So what bothers me greatly is what was done. What bothers me even more is how it was done. There was... As Mr. Doss said, we were beginning to have... Mr. Cassell had expressed a desire to buy the Hole-in-the-Wall. He said he would buy it as is, take over all the health issues, assume the Pump and Hall costs. And so we discussed as a board, we thought is a viable option. All five of us in May were in favor of that, and we decided to have this meeting. And at this point, there's two members who are against that, but... And the board hasn't decided, but just in the discussions of going forward with this meeting, there was a 3-2 vote to have this public hearing meeting, to decide, to get input from the county. So let me tell you what concerns me. This action that the board took was without a court order. They didn't go to court and file... They didn't file a breach of lease suit. They didn't get a decision from the judge, saying, "Yes, you're right." They have, in my opinion, they have taken on a tremendous gamble with your taxpayer money. Because the wise thing would have been to sit back, file your civil case that you... That they breached the lease because they haven't paid in 30 days. Let the judge decide. You haven't interfered with his business practice. You haven't laid off 30 employees who were supporting their families. You haven't damaged anybody's business reputation. But this board, in my opinion, was reckless. And they're reckless with your money. If it was their own money at stake, then let them go, kitty bar the door, and do it. But it's your money. If someone's going to get sued, it's going to be the county of Matthews. It's going to be your tax dollars for torturous interference of a contract, for defamation, for breach of lease. There's just no reason. We were getting ready to advertise... If we made the decision to sell it, we're going to advertise it to the public, let everybody out there have a chance to bid on it. We were going to see what those prices were. We had a market analysis done. We went through that step to see what the value of it was. We were preparing to take some proper steps. Where was the emergency for this? Why did this have to get done with such urgency? There was no emergency. And what this board has... What this board has done, they have increased by going the self-help route, by going and doing this without getting a court order. They have increased the amount of damages. This is going to court. You know the court's going to decide it now. If the court decides that the action of the county is wrong, then that gives Hole-in-the-Wall a tremendous opportunity to sue for damages. If the court decided the county is correct that the lease was properly terminated, then that's the end of it for Cassell. But the proper decision, in my opinion, for this county to take, is to take that step first, not last. Take that step first. And let... Because if the court were to rule that you're wrong, then you haven't put him out of business, you haven't damaged his reputation, you haven't laid off these 30 people. And the county's not liable for any damages, because you didn't do anything other than have a disagreement and took it to court. By taking this agreement outside the court system, and what we call self-help, going in there without a court order, closing the doors, locking it up, and saying the lease is terminated, if the court ends up telling us we're wrong, I just hesitate to think what those damages are going to be. what those damages are going to be.
Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. As I listened to Mr. Bowen argue the case like it's in court, we need to bring, well, good, that's very good. So I'm going to bring the facts to it. Chairman, it's my time. I did some looking in when I went over these bills and the correspondence that took place, and I'm going to read to you from Wednesday, July the 9th, 2025, at 4:28 p.m. On June the 3rd, this is from Mr. Cassell, I believe from his wife's email, to Ashley Hubbard. He says, "On June the 3rd, I emailed the county my version of what was discussed earlier in May." Keyword, "what was discussed earlier in May." And what I felt, I owed the Hole in the Wall restaurant. That's reasonable. "You apologize for taking a while to respond back to me," and your response stated that you'd get back to me on June 20th after your review. "I did not hear back on the 20th, so I sent you another email on July the 1st, checking again and requesting information so I could come in and pay the county. Consistent with my lease and the addendum," which is not an addendum, it is an MOU, "I remain willing to pay the county what I truly owe, and I can pay immediately the amount which is itemized below. I look forward to hearing from you and the county. Thank you, Michael Cassell." "Itemized," he says, "$15,763 in one cent, June through November 2024, 75% pump and haul. FY25 flood insurance for $384 old ferry at $917. The rent for the first quarter as discussed, which will hopefully give the county enough time to sell the property." So I'm looking at this, and I'm saying, there was never any discussion that I knew about about paying the rent quarterly. So I'll start down the path to find out if there was any discussions about paying the rent quarterly. I called Mr. Doss, I text messaged Ms. Phillips, I asked Mr. Walz. I know I haven't had any conversations about that. So as you listen to Mr. Bowen, he's directing these problems of this payment to our staff. Well, as you all know, not one board, just a single board member can negotiate a contract or go change one. It has to be done by board action, okay? All right, board action, that's right, board action, okay? So with that being said, as I look forward into it, I sent Mr. Bowen an email, and I said, "It must have been you that was doing the negotiation. I didn't hear back from you." So I guess over the weekend, yeah, I didn't hear back, so over the weekend, I get some text messages from the county attorney, which I'd like to enter those text messages into the public record, and I will have one for the press. Here's one for you. You have it. Mr. Doss? And I want this made part of the minutes. So on May the 29th, Mr. Cassell and Mr. Bowen had some text message conversation. Mr. Cassell says, "Want me to pay it month to month or until we come to an agreement in August?" Okay? Wait a minute now. There's no agreement by the board or the four other people sitting up here outside of Mr. Bowen, so he's negotiating once again a contract without the board's knowledge. Okay? "Let me know what you'd rather," question mark. Mr. Bowen comes back and says, "I think it would be better to pay monthly or quarterly." Sorry, that's not in the lease, okay? He says, "Okay, let me know what you want me to do for Monday, thanks." Okay? He goes on to say, "I will pay quarterly." Quarterly, he's making this decision for the tenant. "I will pay quarterly at this time." And at the end of the quarter, we'll have a better idea of where we're at in the negotiations, what negotiations, what negotiations were going on outside the board. Okay, so now, with that, I read you the Bill of Lading, which is understandable, from July the 9th. And that email was sent by Mr. Cassell at 4:28. Now I want to enter these documents into the record.
When everybody gets an opportunity to speak tonight.
What Mr. Bowen failed to tell you, that he also, he states that there was no correspondent to the tenant from the county as of July the 9th. That's what he said, he said it right here. I beg to differ because the correspondence came from Mr. Bowen. And I will read. On 7/9, the same day, the 25th, at 7:27 p.m., Mr. Bowen says, "Mac, you and I did discuss, you and I did discuss you paying your rent quarterly, but that is not what the lease states, and the board did not agree to modify the lease." Okay? "I do not have the authority to agree for you to pay your rent quarterly. The lease states that the rent shall be paid 12 months in advance on the first term. I suggest you pay 12 months' rent in advance and all other items not disputed. If there's a question, so what is owed on the pump and haul, I then think it would be reasonable to wait to hear from the county, wait to hear from the county as to what is owed for the pump and haul."
I understand, excuse me, Mr. Jones, Mr. Jones. I understand this is an emotional topic. I understand that this is an emotional, just, Mr. Jones, one minute. I understand that this is an emotional topic, but please allow the speakers to speak. You'll have your opportunity during citizen comment time, please. I would greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
The board members that are sitting here, other than Mr. Bowen, were not privy to any of these discussions. And so as I sit here tonight, and I listen to his word salad, okay? As I sit here and I listen, as I sit here and I listen to the word salad and how, let him do it.
Hold on, Mr. Jones, hold on for a minute.
Good. More than you. As I sit here and listen to it, he at no time made the board aware of any of his actions or negotiations, and last year, he was told by our attorney at that time not to have any more discussions. So what has taken place here, so somebody wants to, I'm trying to understand what is supposed to happen in August. They said the negotiation of the sale, was there a sale going on behind our back?
Hold on, Mr. Jones, hold on. Listen, okay, please, I'm trying to be respectful to everybody. I understand that you disagree with us and you disagree more with others, but please be respectful. I do not want to have to ask somebody to leave. Please do not make me do that. You'll have your time during citizen comment to say whatever you want to say. Please, this is the last time I'm going to ask you. Please don't make me have somebody have to leave. I don't want that. Our county does not need that, no matter how much we disagree with each other. I know that you disagree with me on this, but we have a great county. Show the respect to all the board members, please. Thank you.
I have a new to my time, Mr. Bowen. I have not yielded my time, Mr. Bowen. Do not interrupt me again, Mr. Bowen.
Let's keep it professional. Mr. Jones, go ahead. Thank you.
You can laugh all you want. The lease states without notice and without demand. My question is, why was there a quarterly rent negotiated? He could have, the tenant could have simply walked in and just paid the annual rent, the pump and haul had nothing to do with it. Why was there a quarterly rent negotiated? Why? That's the question that I have. If you have to pay your rent, $8,100 in the lease, it says, okay, that means you pay your rent, anything else that's disputed, you have an opportunity to dispute, but it doesn't, you've paid your rent. Okay? Where did anyone have the authority to direct the tenant to pay it quarterly? That's what you have a board of supervisors for. If he had have brought this to the board, okay, and said, "Listen, he's asking for a modification to pay it quarterly," I don't think anybody would have had a problem with it. But we never knew. So with that being said, if board members can just arbitrarily make decisions, okay, without speaking to each other, okay, there's no use in having a board. If one's going to go out and negotiate, if you're going to go out and negotiate a contract without the other boards knowing it, I don't think that there's one member that's sitting on this board, if Mr. Bowen had have said, "Listen, the tenant has asked if he could pay quarterly," and laid it out and said, "A miss a potential sale." Okay? The county also never said anything to him about any problems about paying for the pump and haul until the records were reconciled. At that time, if there was an error in there, you wouldn't want the gentleman to have to pay anymore than what he's supposed to. Okay? But the thing is, is most people only see one thing. They think, okay, there's an advocate here, and no matter what happens, he can go around the board anytime he wants. It's not what he was elected to do. He was elected, and let me say this, talking about, he says in his letter, he talks about transparency, okay? It says, "Emails regarding the closure of the Hole in the Wall. As a member of the board, I believe for purposes of transparency, it is important to share these emails to the citizens." Well, we have all these emails, he just didn't share his. Okay? So when you say that you're going to be transparent, give all the documents provided, okay? All the documents provided. And I'm going to say this again, if Mr. Bowen had have come to the rest of these board members and said, "Listen, he would like to pay quarterly, can we make it a lease addendum?" I would have had a problem with it because I don't care if he wants to pay quarterly, if he wants to pay monthly. And in the statement at the end, when he says, "And it will hopefully give the county enough time to sell the property," well, you can kind of take that two ways. Are you saying to us that you're all right with us selling the property and doing it out in public procurement as we're going to do, discuss tonight? I don't know. I didn't have the discussion with him. All I can say is, it says, "The rent for the first quarter as discussed." As discussed. So Mr. Bowen decided that he was going to go outside the board and make a deal, and I believe the Planning Commission Chair, when it was brought up to him and sent over to the Planning Commission for a possible zoning, to exclude the county from zoning, he said, "This looks awful shady." And a lot of people on that board said the same thing. Well, if you're going to start your memoir off as transparency, then wouldn't you make the other board members, okay, aware of, he would like to do it quarterly? Okay? All right, sending something like this to our staff, they have no decision-making power when it comes to the lease. They can't tell the gentleman whether he can pay or not, okay? Or how he can pay, it goes back to the lease. So he decides he's going to circumvent the process, try to make everybody look bad to get a sale. So he throws it on our finance person who does the intake, he puts it on the county administrator, he puts it on the county attorney. If the county attorney didn't do anything else, didn't do anything right, well, you know, it looks like to me that he just decided he was going to go act alone in this matter. And so I rest on that to you here, people. Did you elect one board member or did you elect five? Thank you.
Mr. Walz?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First thing I'd like to say is, I strongly resent Mr. Bowen for the last week disparaging our chairman. It's unbelievable. And then, he throws a county employee up under the bus and blames everything on her. But all along, he's negotiating with Mr. Cassell behind the scenes. So I have a question for you, Mr. Bowen. Last August, we paid outside counsel to come to this county from Virginia Beach to have a closed session meeting so we could get some advice from her. Did she not tell you to have no more contact with the Hole in the Wall? We had already disbanded your one-man subcommittee. Did she not tell you not to have any more contact with him, Mr. Bowen?
At that time, the lawsuit was in place, and that's what she said. I sent an email out to Mr. Cassell and copied the board that I would have no further contact. The lawsuit was later dismissed. This board decided for Tim Doss and I to contact Mr. Cassell with the offer that Mr. Doss mentioned. We had a phone conversation with him on March 31 at 9:30. Mr. Cassell refused the offer and asked to buy the property. That's when Mr. Doss and I both brought that back to the board, discussed his concerns, and that's when the board decided to pursue this process. And if you go to the May meeting after the closed session, you'll hear Mr. Jones make the motion to send to the Planning Commission the ordinance, or the motion that the county attorney suggested that we exempt the county from zoning ordinance so that we could sell, so we could subdivide this property quickly. That was the whole purpose of that, and the whole board was in favor of that because it was a 5-0 vote. And then in June, by 5-0, all five supervisors approved the minutes of the May meeting, so they approved it again.
Please, folks, Mr. Bowen, are you still a licensed attorney?
Yes, I am.
You hold a license, so, okay, I don't believe it, but I hear you. What you have been doing, what you have been doing is you have been circumventing two attorneys, our attorney and the attorney last August from Versa. You've been circumventing them, and you've been negotiating, Mr. Cassell. This is how cut and dried it is for me. The lease says it's due on June the 1st. The lease says it's due on June the 1st. His rent is due on June the 1st. As long as I've been on this board, he's paid his rent by June the 1st. He knows it's due on June the 1st. He knows exactly how much the insurance is, but he chose not to pay it on June the 1st. He could have paid his rent, just like the lease calls for. We could have waited on the pumping hall figures. I can tell you from 5:15, I reported right here in this meeting. Ms. Hubbard has been trying to get these pumping hall numbers straight since I know March the 10th. She might can correct me on that. These people in Texas have not been very cooperative. That's why the pumping hall numbers weren't straight. It doesn't matter. We're not here talking about pumping hall. We're simply here talking about, the man did not pay his rent, he breached the lease, and as far as I'm concerned, that's where it's at. We shut it down because he breached his lease. He has an opportunity to come back to the table. If he chooses to do that, if he don't, then we will move forward from there. I'm done.
Board members, do we have anything further, or to move on to the next item on the agenda? Next item on the agenda is supervisor report. If you don't mind, I'd also like to start with that. Last week, county had a horrific incident in the county. Horrific. And I just wanted to take a moment and commend the dispatchers, the sheriff, her department, the fire department, and the rescue department, that had to deal with that horrible incident. Our fire department ran into that fire and pulled people out. I've reiterated, I try to do it every meeting, because I truly believe it in my heart. We are blessed here. We have a great sheriff, we have a great sheriff's department, we have a great fire department, and we have a great rescue department. So I just wanted to let them know. I just, I just wanted to let them know that we appreciate what they do, because they take a lot of time from their families, a lot of time for training and all kinds of things. It takes a lot of dedication. So I just wanted to say thank you to them, and thank you, Sheriff, if you could pass that along. And I haven't seen the chief for the fire or the rescue here, so.
There you go.
There you go. Well, if you could pass that on, I appreciate it, okay? Board members, thank you, if you have anything else.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll go next. I don't have a whole lot to say tonight, but it doesn't matter to me what side of this issue you're on. I want to thank everybody for coming out here. You may not agree with me, I may not agree with you, but you have a First Amendment right that said you're allowed to voice your opinion. The next thing, buoy number four at the hole in the wall has now been deployed. So I would have to say, since June of 2016, when I first embarked on this to July of 2025, nine years and one month it took to get the dredge done and the hole in the wall channel marked. We are still currently working on Davis Creek. Secondly, we were contacted by DAR, and Ms. Justice, probably about three weeks ago, it was just before 4th of July, and they asked if they could plant flowers around the memorial downtown. I don't know how many of you have noticed, but that was right before the 4th of July. I've been in this county 25 years, I have never seen that memorial look as good as it does today. I would like to thank Ms. Justice, the dollars of the American Revolution for paying for it, and Mr. Ricky Tomlinson for donating.
Thank you, everybody coming for hole in the wall.
Go ahead, Mr. Walsh.
Thank you, sir. Anyway, I'd like to thank DAR, Angela Justice, for doing the planning. DAR paid for the plants, and Mr. Ricklin, Ricky Tomlinson of Matthews Lawn and Garden for donating the march. When you get a chance and you go by, take a look at it. It's pretty impressive. That's all I got, sir. Thank you.
Chair, Mr. Jones? All right. We have to wait till citizen comment, I'm sorry, there are no questions, ma'am. Ma'am, you could, you could say it during citizen comment, ma'am, which is, I believe it's next, it's after this, after this. Yes, ma'am, you could, you could let us know during citizen comment, okay? We would appreciate that.
That's going to be the public hearing.
Ma'am, if you're, if, ma'am, ma'am.
Thank you.
Come on. Ma'am, you'll have, we'll have a public hearing about the, if I can, I can barely hear you, but we'll have a public hearing if you're, what you're saying is in reference to the possible sale, okay? Yes, ma'am, it's on the agenda for tonight. Thank you. Ma'am, please, we'd like to move forward, please.
She's disrupting.
Ma'am, 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 I don't want to have to ask you to leave. Please don't make me do that. Please wait, ma'am, please. Would you, I'm sorry, would you take her out of the meeting? I'm sorry, ma'am, you have to leave. Folks, we've all, including yourself, we've all had to do a lot of things. That's one thing I did not want to have to do. Please, let's not have any more of that happen tonight. I really appreciate that, please. I want everybody to have an opportunity to speak your mind, regardless if you agree with us or not. That is your right, please, at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Okay, so I understand the feelings of the employees. And over the past couple days, I mean, I've said this before, of some viable solutions to fix the problem over there. The septic is a very, very, very tough situation. If we were to try to reactivate the old septic system over there, you'd only be allowed by law about eight to 10 seats. That's why the, the pumping hall has been going on so long, because the state law says you have to have 50 gallons a day per seat. We have been wrestling or talking about, as a board, and let me make sure you understand, as a board, maybe it's the best solution right now, or, or in the past, to remedy the problem to keep this thing moving. And as I sat back and I wa, and I looked at all of this, I said, "The solution is very simple. The solution would be to remove the old tanks over there. County puts in polypropylene tanks, and we work a new deal that's equitable." Now, I'm quite sure with the leakage in those tanks, just from my professional opinion, that pumping hall would be cut back way back. So fair and equitable, in my, in my view, would be to renegotiate a licensure, license agreement with the tenant, okay? Let the attorneys handle it. Let the county put the polypropylene tanks in. That way, we can control the amount of fluid that's not seeping into the ground, or the amount of rainwater that may be coming into tanks. This is a solution that we can make work, okay? It may have to be a permanent solution, we don't know. It's hard to find a place that we can get a perk spot for 2,500 gallons a day. The lease only allows for three, about 380 gallons a day over there, okay? And the engineer, some years ago, made it very clear with the Next Gen, when the county paid all the money, out the $78,000 or $68,000 on a system that we can't use, because you can't put that much of fluid in there. So it has to be a viable alternative. So my proposal, and this can be discussed and worked out between the attorneys or however it is, is for us to get the tanks put in, okay? Get a licensure agreement with the tenant, if he's, if he's wanting to go that route, okay? And see if we can come to an equitable solution and move on. Move on from it and put it to rest, and so we don't have to meet in here again to go over these things again, and everybody be hostile, or upset, or anything of that nature, okay? But we have to find a solution. If you're not willing to make a solution, everybody's got to be willing to bend a little bit to make it work, okay? And if they're not willing to bend, I'm willing to bend, okay? But we got to find a solution to make it work. That's all I have.
Mr. Bowen?
Oh, really? Okay. Whatever, Dean. So I just want to briefly reply to some things that have been said in the last half an hour. Let me begin by saying that the law is not black and white. There's a lot of gray in the law. There can be some disagreement. That's why our Supreme Court of the United States sometimes have five, four decisions. It's not always clear. So the fact that I disagree with the county attorney, I think is understandable. Attorneys disagree. On page 14 of the lease, it talks about, very clear, I think any English teacher could understand it. "Tenants shall be deemed in default if tenant failed to pay any installment of rent within 30 days after notice." So we parsed that out. He failed to pay rent within 30 days, but my argument is that there was not a legal notice under the lease. Now, the court's going to decide that. So the problem, as I repeat, is not the disagreement. I'm not arguing that the county attorney is right or wrong. I disagree with her. What I'm saying is, this board should not have taken the self-help remedy. They should have submitted this to the court first. That's where, in my opinion, the worst advice was, that to minimize any liability to the county, file your civil case in court for breach of lease legally, in my opinion, as a lawyer. The failure to pay rent was a breach. However, it was not a default, because the default provisions of the lease were not enacted. However, the county, under notice, said they were acting under the default provisions. Now, I may be wrong, I may be right, but again, the prudent decision, since using taxpayer money, is not to go and lock him out like they did, but go to court and see what the judge says.
Ms. Phillips, did you have anything?
Thank you, Chairman Dawson. I think I expressed earlier my problems of what happened last week, and there's no doubt, what happened last week was very serious and could be costly in the long haul. I will admit that I do not have the experience, the legal experience that any of my fellow supervisors have. I go to court for traffic violations. That's it. But while I don't have that experience, I'd go by something, and that is what's ethical. And sometimes something might be legal, but is it ethical? And I try to always go by that. It's always led me in the right direction for the most part. I think it works for most people. And once again, I'm frustrated that this board has not been able to get this kind of disruption behind us and move on to important things. I am hopeful that we can do so. And I, once again, I welcome any comments or suggestions you may have for all the issues that I mentioned earlier, diversification of revenues, problems with our schools, the aging and declining population. We have big things that have far-reaching and long-term problems for us if we don't step up to it. So thank you for coming, and please, stay in touch with us.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Mr. Jones?
I got a call from Mr. Galuzzi the other day. He was a, he was a former tenant, and I asked him, I said, "Mr. Galuzzi," he says, "I see what's going on," and I said, "Well, I need to ask you a question." He said, "What's that, Mr. Jones?" I said, "Will you tell me the reason why you didn't get your lease?" He said, "Yeah." He said, "It was a technicality." He said that the lease called for 90 days that I had to renew, and he said, "And I waited 120." And he said, "I wasn't given really any notice of anything," and he said, "I walked the paperwork in, I turned it in, I thought it was 120 days." He said, "It's my fault. I didn't pay, I didn't do it. I didn't renew the lease. I didn't do it on time." And anybody would like to talk to the man, he called me, and I asked him point-blank, and he said, "Now, I could have fought it. I could have fought it legally." He said, "But at that point," he said, "What's it worth?" He said, "A legal technicality, okay?" And he said, "I didn't do what I was supposed to do when I was supposed to do it."
Board members, if there's nothing further, Mr. Walsh?
Thank you. I would just like to comment on what Ms. Hudgens said. This, we do have an opportunity to fix this, and it's called renegotiation. That renters are more than welcome to come to the table, and we will do that. And we will make sure that going forward, it's fair and equitable for them and the citizens of this county. Since I've been on this board, this is the first time that we've had that opportunity. They did not pay their rent on June the 1st. We closed the building, and now we can renegotiate.
Mr. Arndt? I'm sorry. Mr. Bowen, did you have something? Okay. Mr. Arndt, board members, Mr. Arndt would like to say something.
I just wanted to let everyone know that I am having daily conversations with the attorney for the hole in the wall, with the hope of getting the hole in the wall back open as soon as possible, and allowing the business to go forward. So, thank you.
Ms. Arndt, if you could address 7A?
Yes. Item 7A is an emergency procurement contract that is done in accordance with Virginia state law. It requires that a certain determination be made as to the reason for the emergency contract. And the reason in this instance is that our other IT provider is, we're having difficulties with the response time and the work that is being done, and I think, as all of you know, computers and functioning internet and backing up your data is something that is pretty critical these days. And so as an emergency measure, the board is awarding an emergency contract to Sensi Enterprises out of Fairfax, Virginia, as a temporary measure, and very shortly, an RFP for IT services will be put out, so that another IT provider can be selected through the normal procurement process.
Do we need to vote on that, Ms. Arndt?
Yes.
Okay. Can I get a motion from a member to approve that?
I shall move.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just briefly, this RFP, if we authorize this, and then authorize an RFP, request for proposal, will allow
proposal, will allow our current provider, Alliance, will allow Sensi, will allow the previous IT provider, anybody out there to procure and to bid on this, which is what should have been done. And apparently, we discovered this, I don't know, several months ago, four or five months ago. In looking at our current situation, we realized that the original contract had never been procured properly. It never had been submitted to RFP. So that's why we have to go back, terminate the contract we have now, and advertise it to give everyone a fair chance.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Chair.
Mr. Jones?
The audio is a little bit hard to hear from where you're at. Is it my understanding that the, has Alliance stepped down from their current contract?
No, and I intentionally didn't want to mention the name of our current provider, but...
Well, out of transparency, you do understand that that particular contract was, since it is illegal, okay, by the standard of the law, okay, that current contract is still in effect, okay? And was illegally tried to be renegotiated under the same contract, okay? So I need clarity. So what you're telling me is, is we're going to put this out for bid, and now we still have a current contract with them? They have not stepped away from their contract?
Correct. But it was my intention tomorrow to send a notice of an intent to terminate and advise them about the RFP.
I would have to say that it's putting the cart before the horse. I'm just letting you know that I don't, I'm not going to vote for that, that's putting the cart before the horse. I think the termination letter needs to go to them first. And then, if they accept it, okay?
My concern was interruption of services.
Well, they've been notified with the intent that we would like to terminate because it was in the discussion that Mr. Bowen gave them, okay? All right? So all I'm saying is, but there's, the contract is still in force because we budgeted for it, okay?
Yes, sir.
So, and that contract's written totally different than the lease that states in there. We have, we have, they have a legal document that they're executing and that they're performing on, so...
Any further discussion? Ms. Green, can you take a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bowen?
So to be clear, this motion is to, for the emergency procurement?
Yes, sir.
I vote aye, yes.
Mr. Walls?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Nate.
Mr. Doss?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
May I ask for a motion from the board as to whether I'm to send a termination notice to Alliance or not?
Yes, ma'am. Can we get a motion to send a termination letter to Alliance?
I so move.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Do we have any discussion? Ms. Green, could you do roll call vote, please?
Mr. Bowen?
Aye.
Mr. Walls?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Doss?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson, if you could take 7B?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. 7B is the RFP that we intend to send out and advertise for IT managed services. In the, in your packet, the document, there's one, the board had voted to have the managed services onsite one time per week as part of their proposal and their cost estimate. But I had a suggested change, and I went over it with Chairman Doss, and he wanted, he said it was the board's decision. And so it's on page 42 of 105 in your packet, and it states, "The county is seeking a contractor experienced in government IT services with applicable security clearances and certificates and the knowledge and experience to maintain the county's infrastructure. The county recognizes that a great deal of managed services can be provided remotely. However, the county is seeking onsite support one day per week." This is where I would like to change it to 32 hours per month at variable intervals, each interval not to be less than eight hours, and then continue the paragraph with the emergency response. And the reason I think it's a cost-saving measure, because if you don't need them one week, but then you need them twice the next week, this gives us the flexibility to move it around, and I think more cost savings.
Board members, do you have any discussion, questions for Ms. Wilson?
Ms. Wilson, to make sure I understand the motion, on my agenda packet, page 42, and I had that highlighted with an asterisk to bring it up if it wasn't discussed, but it does says, "Each interval not to be less than eight hours, 32 hours per month." Is that...
Mr. Bowen, could you repeat that? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Well, my, I'm just making sure if we have the same packet.
No, we did. So it was submitted, and then I submitted it to Judy with this change, the 32 hours. Then the chairman said it needed to be a board decision to do that. So we didn't have time to change out the documents.
I got you.
What's in here is what I was proposing, so apologize.
Well, I agree with the most recent agenda packet that says onsite support 32 hours per month at variable intervals, each interval not to be less than eight hours.
Any other discussion? Can I get a motion to allow Mrs. Wilson to put out the RFP for managed IT services?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Green, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bowen?
Aye.
Mr. Walls?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Doss?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson, if you could read the citizen comment requirements?
For the public comment period, each speaker is allowed three minutes of speaking as an individual and five minutes of speaking on behalf of a group such as a club, association, nonprofit organization, and the like, or unless prior arrangements have been made for the individual to be allotted five minutes. All remarks should be addressed to the board as a whole. Speakers shall refrain from comments or behavior that involves disorderly speech or action, name-calling or personal attacks, obscene or indecent remarks, and derogatory comments on personalities. Please state your name and address for the record and declare any group you are representing. If you would like to comment on a public hearing presented on the agenda, please hold your comments until the public hearing is opened. Comments must be germane to the services or policies of the county. Persons speaking before the board or leaving comments on the board's digital meeting portal will not be allowed to campaign for public office, use profanity or vulgar language, or address pending litigation.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Mr. Bowen?
Ms. Wilson, those rules about derogatory comments, do they apply about comments from supervisor to supervisor?
Are you asking about, under the rules or the bylaws of the board?
We can just move on. That's all right. Ms. Green, do you have a list that you could go by, that sign-up list?
The first person signed up to speak is Sheriff April Edwards.
Okay. Good evening, Sheriff.
Before the sheriff starts, folks, when you come to the microphone, if you would please stay in it, it is really difficult to hear up here from that microphone. I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. I'm here tonight in reference to the Facebook post that went out regarding the SRO program and as well as myself speaking out at the school board meeting this week. I know you all have been made aware through Chairman Doss of the dissolution of the SRO program. For clarification, we have had Sergeant Hill in a capacity of SRO for all three schools since 2017. That is eight years, eight school years that she has ensured the safety of all three of our public school campuses. This means she has handled every crime, every investigation conducted within the school. She has been a part of every threat assessment, conducted training for all staff and students on active shooter response. She has worked traffic enforcement in the school zones. She has worked ballgames as well as other duties that she has assigned internally within our office. And I'm pretty sure she's been at most proms and graduations. Her position is funded by the State Compensation Board, and this position is given to our office to serve Matthews County as a whole. The past three years, we have hit a number of roadblocks with the schools, which I will not be addressing in this forum, and we are trying to iron through those issues. Both agencies have agreed that the memorandum of understanding needs to be rewritten, as there are issues related to school campus security that I feel so strongly about that I just cannot cave on. And then there are issues that the school has that they feel strongly on as well. Until we have some work sessions, there will not be an MOU at this time. Having only one SRO over the past couple of years has proven to be unacceptable. There is an overwhelming demand that has been placed on that one SRO. Last year alone, if I remember our numbers from speaking, meeting with the chairman of the school board and Dr. Daniel yesterday, I believe there was approximately, if not more, 100 threat assessments conducted across all three schools for last school year. The SRO has to be present in each of those threat assessments in accordance with that MOU, just to kind of show you the demand that she's under just in regards to threat assessments. And a threat assessment could be just something as simple as a child stating that they want to kill themselves. That's going to warrant a threat assessment. Not only that, but Sergeant Hill in the year 2024 was responsible for 22 individual investigations within our office. To ask one person to handle this for all three schools is ridiculous. We've made it work. However, it's pretty demanding. Not to mention, protection only lies to whichever school where that lone SRO is physically loaded, located at whichever particular moment. This leaves the other campus vulnerable to a potential threat. We will no longer be allowing one person to handle all three schools. There is simply just too much demand, and if we cannot properly staff the schools within SRO, we will just have to wait till we can. I know each of you constantly hear from me in previous meetings about just how busy our office has been, or we have a need for this, or we have a need for that. And then add to that the increase in court days that, if you all remember, are not so long ago came to you, because everything is increasing in our office as far as time spent. Not only are our court days increasing, but also the hours that we spend in court. Basically, our staff is burning the candle at both ends. I will now provide you with a summary comparing key law enforcement statistics for the Matthews County Sheriff's Office from January through June of 2024 and 2025. Judy may have passed that out to you all, so you may have it. And it's on letterhead, and basically what it says is felony arrests. In the first half of 2024, we had 29 felony arrests. During the same time period in 2025, that number increased to 41, representing a huge 41% increase in felony arrests. Misdemeanor arrests decreased slightly from 75 in the first half of '24 to 67 in the same timeframe in 2025. Our year-to-date totals, this is the one thing that is very concerning for me. In 2024, the sheriff's office made a total of 57 felony arrests and 156 misdemeanor arrests. As of June 2025, we have recorded the 41 felony arrests, which almost is equal to what we did for all of last year. We are seeing a rise in violent crime, including homicides. There were homicides in 2024, and unfortunately, we have already experienced two in 2025. Responding to the most recent homicide has placed a significant operational demand on our staff. Just one investigator has logged over 80 hours in the last six days, with other deputies also working extended hours to support the investigations. These trends underscore the growing demands on our office and the need for continued support as we respond to increasingly complex and serious criminal activity out in our For perspective, the increase in the 2024 total, or the 25 totals from 2024 is significant, and it does take a lot of time for our investigators to put a solid case together in order to deliver it to our Commonwealth's Attorney, Ms. Walls. So ironically, the reason I'm here is just yesterday, unbeknownst to me, I didn't know it until right before I met with Dr. Gibbs and Dr. Daniel, but the SRO grant presented itself again yesterday through DCJS. They will fund up to $100,000 per SRO position. The problem with this grant, as we've discussed this before, is that daggone local composite index that they make, they want to hold us to as far as a cash match. So I'm not going to, you know, you've heard me bend enough ears about that and how unfair it is for our small county. But I did print the packet, the DCJS packet, and I'm just asking if that can be shared among the board. I will say that the deadline for the grant is August 13th. If this is something we want to entertain, I would just encourage that we look at it for the two positions. I know that we're in a budget crunch. I get it. But I believe that we can function much better, the schools would be safer if I could at least have an SRO on each of those campuses that are there during the school hours. I have asked the school board to work the SRO salary into their budget and to consume the costs once it goes beyond the grants. I'm willing to eat the costs for now for the equipment, the uniforms, the vests, everything else that would be needed for the SRO. But this is what I'm asking for, and I'm only asking just because I see it as an opportunity. Sergeant Hill has been reassigned into a supervisory role, and she will likely not be returning to the schools. Lastly, I was elected to ensure the safety of this community, which, by the way, our deputies and investigators definitely understand that assignment. The community, ensuring the safety of our school, of our community also includes our schools. So one SRO is not good enough to offer protection of three schools. And I cannot part with two positions. It just cannot happen to fill this, to fill this need. I just cannot also deprive the community of adequate deputy coverage as a whole. So here I am, and that is the only solution that I could come up with. So I just ask you to please review it, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Sheriff, I have a question.
Yes.
So if I recall correctly, our LCI is 59.6%.
Yes, sir.
So they're offering to fund $100,000.
Per position.
Does that interpret to, the state will give us $41,000?
Mm-hmm. Per each position. And, I mean, obviously, the salary doesn't get close to there, but they do allow for the fringe benefits for your benefit package, as well as if we wanted to throw some uniform expenses and, you know, anything to get it to that figure, just to kind of help offset that cost, because we're going to pay that anyway.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Board members, if we could look at that packet that the sheriff is providing for us, we have a meeting on the 31st, or may have a meeting if this, unless we're able to finish this tonight. And if not, I...
I mean, I would be glad to work on the grant because, but I just know that's a big ask, and I really don't even want to be up here asking this. I feel like I need to crawl under a rock. But I'm not going to let the schools down either. I'm just trying to find a solution that works for all.
Yes, ma'am. We'll work on it and get back to you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Green?
Jenna Rowe? My name is Jenna Rowe. I live in Cops Creek. Last summer, I was up at the General Assembly because they were sneaky, sneaky. And they tried to pass something that would have went after first responders, veterans' families, and the Commonwealth. It was highly, highly, it was supported by both Democrats and Republicans. It was a fight that we took, and we eventually got them to repeal that. Mr. Doss is relevant. Mr. Doss is real heir of the fight I had. Questions. What does fiscal responsibility mean to you? Because for me, spending $300,000 on attorneys and knowing that this is going to be a lawsuit, to spend $300,000 more for a business that brings in money? My daughter works there. She's a college student. She came home this summer. She's worked there since '23. She went on vacation with her sisters from her sorority, and halfway through the vacation, she's filling out job applications because she doesn't have a job to come back to, and no one's hiring her because there are six weeks left, and she has to go back to school. Fiscal responsibility. You all are wasting taxpayer dollars. Be more responsible with our money. You know what we could do with $500,000? We could hire five more deputies for Sheriff Edwards. I'm sure she could find something to do with $500,000 extra dollars. We could get better equipment for all of the employees in the county. We could pay more benefits for the employees in the county. Instead, this board, and the boards prior, because this is a kick in the can down the road. Does anybody remember Tin Can Alley? Remember how that ended up? Let's waste more money. Waste more tax dollars, because this is what you guys are doing now. So you could have a lawsuit, long drawn-out lawsuit. So you win, you've just spent $200,000 on an attorney to win. Or you lose, and the county has to come up with a seven-figure dollar amount. So who is the winners here and who's the losers? Because right now, the county is losing. No matter how you look at it, no matter what any of you do, you're costing us money. Tim Doss went after the school board budget, line item by line item. I wish y'all would do that when it comes to attorney fees, because I remember Tin Can Alley, that lasted for years. And what happened there? Gwinns Island doesn't have public beach access anymore, and that was a board decision. Please, stop wasting our money.
Dr. Daniel?
Good evening, sir.
Hi, good evening. Dr. Daniel, Superintendent of Schools, Matthews County Public Schools. I'll be brief. I'm just here to echo many of the sentiments with Sheriff Edwards. We had an incredibly productive meeting yesterday for about two and a half hours, working through the challenges with communication issues between the School Division and Sheriff's Office, and personal philosophical differences. So we're working through those to ensure that our students are going to be safe in our buildings. Part of what grew out of that meeting is the growth and the increase in issues within our community that, one, have the potential to come into our schools, but also just what the Sheriff's Department is working through. So as we talked more about that, we talked about the need for increased SRO presence and not decreased SRO presence. And so we have an opportunity to partially fund or subsidize through this grant, an opportunity to increase the safety of our students. So the School Board, the Superintendent, I can speak for myself, I can't speak for the School Board, but we're committed to finding ways to make sure that we can increase SRO presence within the schools. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Green?
Amy Bohannon Stewart. Good evening, Amy Bohannon Stewart. I'm a taxpayer, former long-term Matthews County Public Schools teacher for 21 years, and I'm the parent of a daughter that graduated a year ago from Matthews High School. So I come to you tonight regarding concerns for student and staff safety at our three schools. I've spoken with Sheriff Edwards, and have come in support of her request and Dr. Daniel's request tonight about how things have gone. I've talked to her about how things have gone over the last year, showing one SRO among three schools. I've always thought we should have two, and I know our student body has been shrinking. But the issues law enforcement has had to deal with in the schools have increased since the pandemic, just as behavior issues I have dealt with in the classroom, teacher, as a classroom teacher, have increased following the pandemic. So the increase in behavior issues, high workload, and so many things, working against me burned me out to the point of, well, I've just given up teaching altogether. And that's a recent event, and I don't want this type of thing to happen to an SRO or our teachers. And with everything going on in the world we live in today, one SRO for three schools is just simply not enough. I don't want a burned-out SRO, because that likely means we have no SRO, and Sheriff Edwards has the opportunity to add a much-needed second SRO with some grant money if the funds can be matched by our locality. So if there's any way that this county can help out Sheriff Edwards and our schools with this, I would really, really appreciate it. Student achievement is important, but safety is even more important, and students can have a hard time learning, and teachers can have a hard time teaching if they don't have the proper SOLOs, SRO support, and if they don't feel safe at school. It's hard to learn, it's hard to work. So please consider helping the schools and Sheriff Edwards out. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Green?
Good evening, Chairman Doss and Board Members. As the current School Board Chair, there are two words that you probably hear more from me than any others: student achievement. I hope that our School Board consistently reflects its unwavering, primary, and overarching focused goal, which is student achievement. While student achievement is our number-one property, priority, it, student achievement, does have an essential prerequisite: school safety. Without the insured safety of our students, staff, and school visitors, we have nothing. We cannot elevate, support, encourage, demand, or deliver student achievement in the absence of safety. We can do nothing without safety first. The School Board received an unexpected bit of news from Sheriff Edwards regarding SOAR services being pulled from our schools for the upcoming school year during the citizen comment period of our School Board meeting this past Tuesday evening. That night, after Sheriff Edwards concluded her comments at the podium, I requested that she, Superintendent Daniel, and myself meet by today to discuss her comments and concerns. As you've heard, we met yesterday and had an extremely productive two-and-a-half-hour conversation regarding a myriad of school safety-related issues. I'm here to say that the School Board, school administration, and the Sheriff's Department are all on the same page regarding the ultimate goal of having safe schools in Matthews. One of the many positive results of our conversation centered on the desire among all of us to have two SROs in our schools. The School Board has always wanted two SROs, one for each building. I won't belabor the points that Sheriff Edwards and Dr. Daniel have already gone over regarding the grant. I will say a few thank-yous. First of all, thank you Sergeant Hill for your Herculean efforts in assisting our students, staff, and community at large. We appreciate you. Thank you, Board of Supervisors, for your leadership in our amazing county, and thank you in advance for considering supporting the School Division in our county and the School Board with entertaining the idea of the grant proposal. This is an amazing opportunity, very timely, so that the School Board can focus on what it is supposed to be doing. Its number-one priority is student achievement. You got it. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Gibbs. Ms. Green?
John C. Lewis.
Good evening. John Craig Lewis, 739 Potato Neck Road. I am here to voice my great pleasure of going to the American Revolution, Sons of the American Revolution, of the Battle of Cricket Hill last Saturday. It was a great time. That property is now privately owned. It was kind of crowded there after what we were there, this is the 249th anniversary of that battle. Next year, the Speaker said that Matthews is going to be the last, excuse me, the Gwinns Island Battle will be the last that they celebrate of the six different places that Dunmore traveled from once he left Williamsburg. It's going, the last one is going to be in July. I don't know the dates, sorry. Probably the ninth and tenth, somewhere along in there. Anyway, he may have mentioned that next year is going to be bigger, and that it's going to include Gwinns Island as well as Cricket Hill, which is private land. And I just wanted to say, it's a great thing that Matthews County has public land across from the Battle of Cricket Hill that could hold people for this event. Well, have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Green?
Jonathan Lewis.
Good evening. Jonathan Lewis, Matthews Courthouse. Matthews is a beautiful county with beautiful waters, birds, sunrises and sunsets. In my experience, also beautiful people inside and out. The issue of the Hole-in-the-Wall has been an embarrassing, ugly blight on our beautiful county for far too long. Sell the building, get the county out of the landlord business, because our leadership, past and present, has proven themselves completely incompetent at the occupation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Green?
Good evening, sir. Thank you very much for letting me talk, Chair. Chairman. My name is Tom Sawyer. I'm the manager at Hole-in-the-Wall. Having been raised here in a part of Matthews my entire life, I love this county and I always have, but there has always been a certain stigma about who you know and what you can get accomplished here based on that. From my point of view, some of the people in charge of making decisions for our county carry that same political stigma. Ever since a young woman in sports, I and many others could plainly see that these politics of this county affect everything down to the very bottom of every decision. Now, at 32 years old and nearly 10 years into working with man can dean, I have to sit through these politics randomly affecting my career, my finances, my boss's finances, and my coworkers. We have 34 employees who depend on this work, all with mouths to feed and bills to pay. They don't want to work with us. They have their own vendettas, and we try everything to make it look like it's our fault when it isn't. Look, bottom line, the county shouldn't be landlords for personal or commercial properties. Stop the drama, stop the lying, sell the building. Let us stop having the taxpayers unreasonably pay for our subject that you wouldn't let us take care of. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Green? Ms. Green, can we check the battery on the microphone to make sure it's working?
It's working out here, Dave.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Courtney Poole from North Virginia. I've been a part of the Hole-in-the-Wall family for four years and worked under the Cassals since 2013. That's 12 years.
Ma'am, could you address the board? Thank you.
Tonight, I'm using this platform to give a little insight on Hole-in-the-Wall. To few, it's just a restaurant; to many, it is a family. We have shared many experiences that have brought laughter and joy, and not only to the lives of our staff, but also with our guests. We are not just a restaurant, but a place people come and feel welcome, to create and share memories, to see a familiar, smiling face, a place to bring your family and gather with friends, somewhere to escape reality for a little while, and most importantly, a space to feel comfortable and safe. We look forward to the summer when Matthews resident college students come home and work at Hole-in-the-Wall. We enjoy the hard-working youth, many of which are athletes within the county, who continuously show up with smiles on their faces, ready to conquer another day. We appreciate the staff's families in watching their children grow and how each individual's life unfolds together. We look forward to our many guests that we've built relationships with to share a story, a smile, a joke, and even some of the hardships of life. I may be painting this wonderful picture of Hole-in-the-Wall and what it means to be a part of something bigger, to be a part of a community, but it's not always so simple. We also face a fear on a daily basis if we're going to come to work and have the doors closed and locked on us twice. We have been shut down with no warning, no time to prepare. Have you had, have any of you been kicked out of your place of work, escorted by the police? Have any of you had to face your family and tell them you don't know when the next paycheck is coming? Have any of you ever had to watch, worry, and wait to see the fate of the family-owned business you and your fellow employees are employed at? I hope that none of you have to endure the painful emotions we have had to due to malicious acts against us. I hope that whatever decision is made on behalf of Hole-in-the-Wall, the people of Matthews look within themselves and seek justice we deserve. Think about the lives it affects, job opportunities it offers, and money it revenues for the county. For one moment, put yourself in our shoes. As a community, choose to do the right thing, and we can all grow together. Don't take that away from us. I'd like to leave you with this quote: "Where justice is denied, where poverty is enforced, where ignorance prevails, and where any one class is made to feel that society is an organized conspiracy to oppress, rob, and degrade them, neither persons nor property will be safe." Frederick Douglass. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Green?
Good evening, sir.
Mike Cassell, Gwinns Island. I'll be honest with you, I had a completely different three-minute speech, but after listening to what the Board members have said, I've since adjusted it.
Mr. Cassell, I need to interrupt. Could you step closer to the mic, please?
This is always what you do, and then I end up losing time. So propaganda is a powerful tool when one side is the only one that's heard. Most of what you've been told about me is incorrect, and not just about Hole-in-the-Wall. When Tom Bone and I started negotiations, he was appointed liaison to Hole-in-the-Wall. I purposely terminated my lawsuit so I could talk to him and Mr. Doss without legal counsel, and we spoke on two different occasions when I was not in the county on a conference call. So how am I supposed to know that I am not negotiating with Board members when it's convenient, you take it away from him, when it's not convenient, you give it back to him? I believed that I was negotiating in good faith. I believed that we were going to a solution. The county keeps asking me to spend money, okay? Pay for Pump &amp; Hole, fix the septic system. Well, I've spent enough money on that building, so what I said was, if you want me to fix the... So what I said was, if you want me to fix the septic and you want me to pay for it, then the building has to become mine. So I'm in control of my own destiny. And I don't think that's too much to ask. Couple of things that were left out. The reason why, and everybody's asking, why didn't I pay just the rent? The reason why I didn't pay just the rent was because in the past, the county has never accepted a partial payment from me. When I tried to pay just part of the payment, the county has told me they would not accept the cash, the check, and they would not cash it until I paid the full payment. In fact, one time, I made a small mistake on the check and they called me up and I had to drive back because they would not accept the check the way it was. So, I was trying to get all of the prices so that I could pay it. I think it was incredibly unresponsible of the county to start negotiating with me, to say that they were going to contact me on the 20th, and then to just discontinue and break off negotiations, okay? Anytime you could have called me and said, "Mr. Cassell, we don't know the rest of this, so please come in and pay your full year's rent," and I would have taken care of it. The fact that you believe that I wasn't going to pay is terrible. And I think that you should really reflect on the fact that you took this building away from us twice. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Ms. Green?
The last speaker to sign up is Ms. Dee Russell.
Good evening, Ms. Russell.
Good evening. Dee Russell, 276 Shizer Lane, Hedges, Virginia. Tonight, I stand before you not as an adversary, but as a concerned citizen whose faith in this board is deeply shaken. The foundation of any government rests not on the power or the authority, but on the pillars of honesty and integrity, qualities that I am compelled to say have been profoundly eroded within this community. It pains me to recall a time not so long ago when our board's word carried weight because they were rooted in truth. When decisions were guided by a clear moral compass and promises made to the public were honored, not just with rhetoric, but with action. Not too often, we witness, now too often, we witness selective truths, convenient omissions, and reluctance to accept accountability. The fabric of trust that once united this community is fraying thread by thread. You were elected not merely to govern, but to embody the values you pledged to uphold. And yet, recent actions and inactions have left the citizens questioning your commitment to transparency and justice. When honesty is sacrificed for expediency, when integrity yields to self-interest, the consequences ripple beyond the Board of Supervisors meetings. Confidence is lost, cynicism takes root, the very legitimacy of your leadership is called into question. This is not a mere critique of you as a board or individuals. It's a plea for you to remember the weight of your oaths, the gravity of your responsibility to every citizen in this county, the challenges our community faces which demand courageous leadership guided by principle, not politics. We cannot afford more empty assurances or carefully crafted narratives. We need leaders who will speak plainly, admit mistakes, and make decisions with the greater good in mind. It is not too late to reclaim what has been lost. Honesty can be restored. Integrity can be reaffirmed, but only if you choose to act. Let your actions speak louder than your words. Prove to us, and maybe even yourselves, that you are worthy of the trust that has been placed on you. I cannot thank you enough, Mr. Bowen, for being transparent and doing exactly what I'm asking you all to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell.
Excuse me, Chairman. I have three more people that came.
I can't hear you. What was it?
I'm sorry, three more citizens signed up, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
The next speaker is Mr. Stan Grice.
Stan Grice, Cobbs Creek. Last Thursday, I was on my way to the Hole-in-the-Wall restaurant to meet friends for lunch. Before I could cross the swing bridge, my friend called me and reported the restaurant had been closed and that four Sheriff's Department patrol cars plus several county employees were on site. The owner had been evicted, employees and customers were ordered to get out, and the door padlocked. I'm disturbed how Matthews County government handled this landlord-tenant dispute. I understand there are several interpretations about how all this went down, but there is only one legal and fact-based account here, and that is yet to be determined, despite crafty misleading board quotes in the local paper and misinformed chatter on Facebook. Please put the end to this insanity and sell the property to the owner of the Hole-in-the-Wall. This issue between the board and the Hole-in-the-Wall has festered for years and is now malignant. The excessive show of force at Hole-in-the-Wall last Thursday is not only threatening in nature, but is cruel in its intent. We will soon learn if these actions were legal. And if not, multimillion-dollar lawsuits will follow. This is a, this is a potentially county killer problem. When I moved here, I became involved in a number of organizations and quickly realized that economic development through existing and new businesses and tourism was essential for the future of Matthews. Given how Matthews government has treated the Hole-in-the-Wall, any new business would be crazy to come here. The negative impact from this continued rancorous dispute is corrosive and to the integrity and sheer fabric of our county. At the end of the day, I find this embarrassing. So if we drive businesses out of town, obstruct new ones from coming in, lose the opportunity for increased tourism, and repel residents with this malingering issue, the county is basically screwed. So many good people are doing constructive and positive things to improve our community. Please put an end to this nightmare. Sell the Hole-in-the-Wall to its owner so we can focus on creating more value for the county and its residents instead of focusing on what appears to be a personal vendetta. And I'll add, if the county is a landlord, we suck at being a landlord. This is really bad. Get out of the business of being a landlord.
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Green?
Mr. Robert Riddle? Good evening. My name is Robert Riddle. I live on Weston Hall Road in Port Haywood. I first would like to sincerely thank you. Your roles are not easy, but your service is appreciated. That said, I come before you today with deep concern. There's an old saying, "You can't fix stupid." While blunt, I feel that we as a county are on the verge of making a profoundly unwise, stupid decision, if we haven't already, with the lockout. One that could cause irreversible financial harm and setbacks to the county budgets due to inaccurate guidance from individuals within our county government who quite frankly, may not be fully competent, experienced, or properly informed. Personally, I obtained outside the legal opinion from two very prominent real estate attorneys who reviewed the lease in addendum, you claim it was in addendum, whatever, and stated it was 100% slam dunk for the plaintiff. In my 40-year career as a commercial industrial real estate broker, I've negotiated hundreds of retail leases, restaurants included. I have observed in the courtroom firsthand similar improper seizures when the landlords never won, never won. The county should not own real estate. I think you've proven that by your inabilities and what has happened to date. I want to go on record to clearly state the decision made regarding the Hole-in-the-Wall restaurant has the potential to result in catastrophic, catastrophic financial consequences for the counties. Consequences that could easily run into millions of dollars. That in turn would result in higher real estate taxes for our citizens, compounding the burden they already face with the recent hike in real estate taxes. If the county were to lose a $10 million lawsuit and the enormous legal costs associated with to fight such a battle that I know you will lose, how much will you have to increase the real estate taxes to cover this stupid decision? Recently, I saw the memorandum of the many senior government employees addressing my concerns. I'm one of the most experienced commercial real estate experts in the county, probably the most expert. I've had many expert witnesses in the stands. I'm surprised no one had asked my opinions. Increasing, interestingly, the only comment I received back from any member was that I was reprimanded for my disclosure that I am a member of a county board. No questions, no calls, no inquiries, no clarifications, crickets. No wonder the Hole-in-the-Wall lease collapsed. No one in the county knows how to reply to correspondence from their citizens. What are you scared of? And I would like to say I have had very positive communications with several board members recently. I even had a discussion about being a seasoned professional. I discussed some of the terms of a reasonable market decision would be for selling the property. And I've also met with one of the owners of the Hole-in-the-Wall about that. And I'd welcome to give you my free insight, knowledge, and experience to negotiate a fair, a very fair contract to get this behind us, to stay out of a potential $10 million lawsuit.
Thank you, Mr. Riddle.
Thank you.
Ms. Green?
Mr. Craig DeRimer?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Craig DeRimer, 2 McCollie's Alley, Gwen, Virginia, 23066. I came this evening to talk about how the payment issue went for the 30 days, because it was confusing to me and it seemed to be mixed information. However, Chairman Doss and particularly Supervisor Bowen really went through everything that I would have, which was going through all the emails. There's no reason for me to repeat that. It's already discussed about, and it helps explain how we got where we are now. And so I'm not going to go, I'm not going to say that, because I think that's now understood. Legal or moral or ethical or whatever, that can be worked out later. I still do not understand the urgency that led to the immediate closing. However, speaking of urgency, what I would urge is that as quickly as possible, with the attorney and any other means, that the Hole-in-the-Wall be reopened temporarily, permanently, however, without going through a lot of rigmarole or recontracting, to get the thing open. And this may be naive. Once we have that, we need to get this resolved because as Supervisor Phillips said, there are a lot of really important issues that this board needs to deal with. You really are doing the best you can, and I know you all are trying to do it in the best interest of the county. So here's a naive suggestion. If there is a way to go back and either undo or reconsider what was done last week in terms of the vote and to open this up in exchange for a discussion with the proprietors of Hole-in-the-Wall to not sue, I think that might be a way to at least start discussion of a sale or whatever the future is going to be. I just think this logjam of hate and discontent is only hurting the county, as other speakers have said. So my best wishes, and I know there are many of us out there who want to be of help to you and for the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Green?
Mr. Dan Hill?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Dan Hill. I live 124 Triangle Road, Gwen. I found this really interesting tonight, this whole discussion, not just about the Hole-in-the-Wall, but about some of the discussion that's been up here. May I ask a question? Mr. Jones, do you discuss issues with the citizens?
You can ask the question, Mr. Jones, but he doesn't have to respond, sir.
All right. All right. Board members, do you discuss issues with the citizens?
You can ask me after the meeting, if you'd like.
And the question is, in the attack on Mr. Bowen, was that a discussion of issues or was it negotiation? Who knows? It just, that really surprised me because this board is supposed to be for the betterment of Matthews County. In regard to the IT contract that you guys voted tonight to terminate, that's, you know, that's legal. It's going to cost money, no doubt, because you terminate a contract before it's expired. But was this type of vote taken to renegotiate or terminate the contract with the Hole-in-the-Wall? And what would be the cost to terminate the contract that the county has with the Hole-in-the-Wall? Just questions that came up tonight. But what really surprises me was the rancor among the board members. So to the citizens of Matthews County, I say you're watching the board of supervisors that were elected to work together for the betterment of Matthews County. And I ask that you remember that in the next election. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Green?
Ms. Carrie Colson?
Good evening, ma'am. Carrie Colson, Gwen, Virginia. I thought most of what we were supposed to be talking about tonight was all about the sale of the land where the building sits, the Hole-in-the-Wall. And a lot of things have been said here tonight. I will say, I love the Hole-in-the-Wall, I love Gwinns Island, I love having a restaurant there, I love everyone that works at the Hole-in-the-Wall. It's a wonderful, beautiful family. That being said, the land was given to the people of this county by a private citizen so everyone could have access to the water. We hear about tourism, 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 tourism. And what do we have to offer them? I mean, Matthews is a peninsula. That is the only public access, with the exception of what was just purchased at, what, South Bay Haven? And it was a couple of board meetings ago, I believe, one of the board members had stated that all of the residents were on board for opening that up to the public. Then, of course, the next meeting, we learned that they indeed were not. Why would we be talking about selling a piece of land to then go into a private, I mean, it doesn't make sense. We already have it. There's 30-some people that work at the Hole-in-the-Wall. How many parking spaces does the Hole-in-the-Wall have in the lease? Honestly. All I've seen tonight is that nobody's really willing to work together. And until we do that, it's just going to be constant fighting. But I am not for the sale of the land that was given to everyone. It's not fair to take land that was given to everyone and sell it to someone who already thinks it's theirs. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Green? Do we have nobody else signed up? Do we have anybody else that would like to speak during the? Yes, ma'am, come on down. Right behind you. It's okay, sir, I'll get you next. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. I didn't know I was going to speak tonight, but I agree with that woman who just spoke.
Could you say your name and your? money on taxes, and now I'm coming right back and watching this?
Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Matt Jenkins. I am a part-time resident of Matthews County and a full-time taxpayer. I don't have much time to do this topic justice this evening, so I'll get quick to three points. And these opinions are mine. I do not speak for the 850 other lawyers in my law firm. First, I read carefully and I listened carefully to the facts that were played out tonight of the interchange of how a padlock came to be put on that restaurant. I'd rather have the restaurant side in any law case that ensues. You will lose this case, and it will cost you money. That is my professional opinion through 40 years of practice in the Commonwealth of Virginia, where I remain licensed, in addition to being licensed in the state of Texas. As reported, the tenant was negotiating in good faith and was clearly willing to pay the correct amount due and was waiting for the county to provide that amount. The ball is in the county's court, and padlocking the place in a show of force was a hugely aggressive overreach. It reminds me of exactly what was done to President Trump at Mar-a-Lago when there was a dispute over the documents and it was raided, wholly unnecessary. The Hole in the Wall is one place in Matthews where you can go and get a burger and a beer by the water. You shut this place down, and all that business traffic is going to Deltaville, or it's going up to Lockley's Creek, or it's going across the Rappahannock River Bridge. This is many that you're chasing away through the inopportune actions taken thus far. Think about the message this is sending to others that might want to launch a business in this county. It is not a welcoming message. And the last thing that I leave you with is to echo what some of the others here have said tonight. It's not too late to wind the clock back here and rescind whatever action the board has previously taken. If I were advising you, that would be my recommendation, personal vendettas aside. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Vicki Armentraut. I'm a homeowner on Gwinns Island, and I want to speak to you that I'm against the sale of the building on our boat ramp. When we were buying in Matthews quite a few years ago, that boat ramp talked us in to buy in our property on Gwinns Island. So as a taxpayer in Matthews, I've been trying to understand how the hole in the wall has been profitable for Matthews. From what I see, it's costing Matthews more than adding to our county's coffers, and I'm not even going to get into our recent legal issues. This watering hole has made it impossible for us to use the Gwinns Island public ramp for the purpose that it was deeded to Matthews. Boters cannot safely use the ramp or park a trailer when that business is open. We've noticed also that where it used to be a lot of people buying gas at 7-Eleven, filling their boats up, you don't see that anymore. So the loss of income might be people going in the restaurant, but I'm not seeing them buying gas at the 7-Eleven, putting it in their boats, and launching at that ramp. In my opinion, if the board wants to sell the building and move it off the boat landing property, fine, do that. Otherwise, I'm against it. This property was deeded to Matthews County for use as a public boat ramp, and that is what the water-loving citizens of Gwinns Island want this property to be. We pay personal property tax in Matthews for our boats and our trailers. What good are these taxes if we have no ramp to use? I also want to say I'm in agreement with the board's action to terminate the lease at the recommendation of, for the non-payment of the rent at the recommendation of the county attorney. And I appreciate everything that you all are doing. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. If we'll move, oh, go ahead, sir, my apologies.
I did sign up. I put both my names on the list and get there. I'm Glenn Graham, a resident of Gwinns Island. Thank you, Sergeant Hill and Sheriff Edwards, for everything that you do to keep our county safe. It is very much appreciated. Thank you. There are no lawyers on the board of supervisors today, at least by the board, the American, the Virginia Bar Association, as of 15 minutes ago. There's a retired lawyer on the board of supervisors that might want to get reinstated one day, I don't know. Okay, but he ought to be familiar with the concept of waiver by conduct, acquiescence, estoppel, or course of performance, because if you have an agreement with somebody and they owe you something and they owe you an action, and you don't enforce that action, a court can view that as you arguing with them. So the county attorney, in my view, and the board chair, did the right thing by enforcing, attempting to enforce that lease, taking the action that they did, and we'll see how it plays out. It's unfortunate that this had to happen. There's a resolution in the board package tonight that we haven't talked about yet because it's been focused on the lease and the building only, but I support that resolution. I hope the county board of supervisors will hear that resolution and pass it regardless of whether or not I'm here to speak on that. I support selling the Hole in the Wall building, absolutely. Sell it to the highest bidder, move it, move it over to Morningstar Marina. They got lots of parking, they got waterfront. I'm sure they'd love to have a restaurant over there. We don't need one at the landing that was deeded to Matthews County in 1957. And as far as pumping hall, how long has pumping hall been in play there? Does anybody know? Almost 40 years. Okay, Ralph was having the pumping hall, but it was only every seven, 10 days because he didn't have the traffic that you have there now. Okay? It's time to stop the bleeding, make the land be what it is deeded, go look at the deed from 1957 for a public landing. I can't go take, go down there and launch something. Fortunately, Sunday, a lot of us were able to because we have parking spaces. So please do the right thing, get us out of the real estate business, get rid of that building, give us back our public landing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have more? Anybody else that would like to speak? Well, come on down, if, yes, ma'am. That's okay, that's okay.
Hi, my name is Ruth Machin from Foster. I would like to speak about the land. It is definitely a beautiful gem that I think we absolutely should keep in the county's hands. I believe we should leave the parking open for the boats to launch. You could possibly even make another ramp. I think there's a lot of things that we could do with that. As far as the rent, I definitely feel for all the employees that lost their jobs, and it's a difficult thing to go through. But I have to ask a question. Mr. Casal did not pay the rent. That is the cause of the building being locked and the jobs being lost. I'm wondering why Mr. Casal did not ask the county whether they wanted the rent and the additional money or just the rent before his 30s was up. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am? One second, sir. I'm sorry if you don't mind. I apologize. If you'd just wait right over there, if you'd like, you can be next. Good evening, ma'am.
Mr. Dawson, I don't know exactly how this should start because it was kind of brought up by Mr. Bowen at the beginning of this meeting. The Valdriggi family had that restaurant from 1979 till 2013. I felt like some of the pictures were taken from a hurricane which hit our lovely island in 2003, showing the inside, and yes, it devastated our building. But I also am unsure of the last lease that he had up there. Was that 2016, sir? It was. The one you showed up on the screen.
It started June 1st of 2018, though.
All right. Well, the last, I thought it was the 2016 you had up there. But since Mr. Valdriggi died in 2014, I don't think you'd have a signature page on that. And if you go back into the lease, you would see that all of us, including the man we bought the business from in 1979, we were under, we were under the Gwinns Island Civic League. We were not paying the county. We were paying the Civic League. Then someone went delving way back in history, unknown where, that it had been given, should be given to this, to the county, and let them take over everything that the Civic League was doing, which they were fine with it, we were fine with it, and we had never ever, ever had a problem. We did not have to have pumping hall, except when the tide came up, except when there was a nor'easter, because we only sat 42 people in that little cement building built by a gentleman on the island. And it, we had it for 37 years. We employed a numerous amount of young people, and I just did not like the way this was just portrayed on that. And I think that my family's due an apology.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir? Thank you.
Thank you. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I signed up, but I think I signed up in the wrong category, so sorry about that. I'm Dan Desmond. I live on, in Mob Jack 6401 East River Road. My wife, Kelsey, and I have lived here for 18 years, and we love the county. We love the people in the county. We love the opportunity to volunteer and be involved in making the county better. One of the things I think has a significant impact on bringing revenue into county and making it a better place is our diversity of restaurants. Hole in the Wall is one of those restaurants that's unique to the county, and it's the only restaurant on the water. If you've been to any other counties in the Chesapeake Bay, they have multiple, multiple restaurants on the water. I've sailed up and down the bay many, many times, and there's nothing more rewarding than anchoring off and going up to one of those local restaurants and having a good meal. Hole in the Wall is unique, it's lively, fun, and engaging place, and it's a great place for us to bring visitors. We have family all over the country. When they come here, we love to take them to Hole in the Wall. They can really get a feel for what the county is like. It's a great place for the people of Gwinns Island when they want to get out for a quick bite or have an evening cocktail. It's very convenient for them. The county would be remiss if they made a decision to foreclose the restaurant and permanently shut it down. I recommend the county reconsider this approach. I really appreciate Superintendent Bowen going through the details of what happened, and I'm really sad of how this whole thing came down. It kind of makes me sick. I've been in this county 18 years, I've never seen such a, you know, such a poor decision being made from this board. I recommend you reconsider your approach, give the restaurant a chance, either buy the property or pay the rent that's past due, and to continue to operate the facility. It is really a jewel in Matthews County. It's something we need to keep, and I urge all of you to carefully consider your decision following our discussions here today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Good evening, ma'am.
I too may have signed the wrong list. Donna Machin, Foster, Virginia. Dear board, I am not opposed to the Hole in the Wall, it just needs to be somewhere else. I support the board's decision to terminate the lease. County property should not be used for restaurant business any longer. The Hole in the Wall building is an albatross around our necks that should be sold and moved. Regulations have not been followed, and it has been a liability to the county. We should use that land for the boat ramps and to give people more room for parking. There are other Matthews restaurants which aren't costing taxpayers money, and the Hole in the Wall should join them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Come on down, sir. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Chairman, members of the board of supervisors, my name is Peter Clendenon. I live in Hallford. I've got a very strong background in governance, state. I worked in the governor's office in Virginia. I worked for the state legislature. More recently, I had the pleasure of being recommended by you to be on the board of zoning appeals. Mr. Dawson, you and I both got sued by this board, if I'm not mistaken, and we were called nasty names by members of the board as well. The, one thing I wanted to bring up tonight that has not been discussed, where is management in this? You are dealing with what I call management details, timing of payment, communication, having a county, a counting clerk communicate with the chair. I thought, my God, you're paying good money for a county manager. Where's their role in this? The communication between each of you is very disturbing to watch, how he did it, she did it. I've lost track of who's really in charge. I, I'm really very dismayed at the, the level of coordination, communication, and I'm just asking, why don't you rely on a strong county management system to solve these kind of problems? Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Frye, Port Hayward, Virginia. The board of supervisors is really getting a lot of blame. I blame you, and I blame you, and you, and you, and you. But my question is, why didn't Mr. Casal pay his rent on pretty, on good time, on time, when he had a pretty good thing going? I mean, his rent was low, he has a nice place to go, people to serve. I want to know why he didn't pay his rent on time? What is his responsibility to the citizens and his employee? Where is his ethics in all this? He knew when his rent was due and how much he owed. It wasn't the pumping hall that he was worried about. He had a rent payment. That's all he had, was a rent payment. As a citizen, I do not want to sell this valuable land. If you want to sell the building, so be it, but please don't sell the land. Unfortunately, this board right here that we're pointing, pointing fingers at, you didn't make this lease. You got, you inherited the mess. It is a mess, and it isn't urgent either. This has been going on for years. So I don't, it isn't urgent. Mr. Casal nearly owed the rent, he didn't pay it. He, he had a whole year to get the money. He had a whole year to put it on quarterly payments. He didn't do that. So, Mr. Dawson, as chair, I believe you are doing a commendable job, and thank you all for your service. I, I'm really very dismayed at the, the level of coordination, communication, and I'm just asking, why don't you rely on a strong county management system to solve these kind of problems? Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sharon Frye, Port Haven, Virginia. The Board of Supervisors is really getting a lot of blame. I blame you, and I blame you, and you, and you, and you. But my question is, why didn't Mr. Costello pay his rent on pretty, on good time, on time, when he had a pretty good thing going? I mean, his rent was low, he has a nice place to go, people to serve. I want to know why he didn't pay his rent on time? What is his responsibility to the citizens and his employee? Where is his ethics in all this? He knew when his rent was due and how much he owed. It wasn't the Pumpin' Hall that he was worried about. He had a rent payment. That's all he had was a rent payment. As a citizen, I do not want to sell this valuable land. If you want to sell the building, so be it, but please don't sell the land. Unfortunately, this board right here that we're pointing fingers at, you didn't make this lease. You got, you inherited the mess. It is a mess, and it isn't urgent either. This has been going on for years. So I don't, it isn't urgent. Mr. Costello knew he owed the rent. He didn't pay it. He, he had a whole year to get the money. He had a whole year to put it on quarterly payments. He didn't do that. So, Mr. Doss, as chair, I believe you are doing a commendable job, and thank you all for your service.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else? You already spoke, Mr. Lewis, I'm sorry.
That's what I was going to ask. We still have a hearing.
We still, we still have two public hearings. Yes, sir. We'll go ahead and close the public comment. I don't want to, I don't want to miss somebody. Did I miss anybody that wanted to speak? Okay, we'll close with the citizen comment. Next on the agenda, public hearing.
This is a public hearing to solicit comments from citizens regarding a proposed lease extension for Tompkins Cottage. The lease is in your packet, and I believe there is some representatives from the Historical Society that would like to speak, if they're still here. Oh, yes.
Come on up, folks.
And if you could just state your name. Thank you.
John Hoffman, Redard, Virginia. Good evening, board members. My name is John Hoffman, and I'm on the Matthews County Historical Society Board of Directors. I'm going to speak for a few minutes, followed by Diane Vogel, also a Matthews County Historical Society Board Member and the Tompkins Cottage curator, and then Martha McCartney, also a board member and historian, will close out our comments. Since 1969, the Historical Society has leased Tompkins Cottage from Matthews County. That's 56 years. The initial lease agreement was for 25 years. Since 1994, extensions for the lease were five-year periods. For the last five years, the Society has been extensively involved in working with the county administration and applying for grants to raise Tompkins Cottage above the flood zone to mitigate further damage from damp conditions and potential flooding. To enhance this effort, the Society is also committed to using its own resources to mounting a capital campaign to supplement funds to preserve the cottage. We currently have about $25,000 raised for that. In addition, we have been performing minor routine maintenance on the cottage. In the last year and a half, we replaced a leaky faucet, installed a banister in the upstairs stairwell for safety, and repaired a railing at the front steps, also for safety. Maintenance done on the cottage by the Historical Society is coordinated with Tim Tillage, the Matthews County Buildings and Grounds Director. Diane Vogel will speak next.
Thank you, John. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the, of the board. I'm Diane Vogel. I am on the Board of Directors for the Matthews Historical Society. I am also the curator for the Tompkins Cottage Museum, and I'm here today with John and Martha to ask you to allow us to continue to act as good stewards and caretakers of the cottage. The Cottage Museum is open to the public in parallel with the farmer's market on Saturdays from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. during the months of April through October. We have extended hours during special events such as market days and Mayfair, and we also allow the nonprofits, other nonprofits in the county, to use the grounds during those special events. The cottage is also available for private tours. In June, we hosted six classes of students from Matthews Elementary School, which was about 120 students. We currently have 20 amazing active docents to provide tours and answer questions, and in 2024, we had just under 1,100 visitors to the cottage. Our guests tend to be a blend of residents and tourists. Every visitor who tours the cottage takes a step back in time and leaves with a deeper, rich, deeper appreciation of our local roots. We have displays and artifacts that speak to our rich history of shipbuilding and commerce, a room with furnishings consistent with living in the early 1900s, a room dedicated to Captain Sally Tompkins, one of the first females to be inducted as an officer into an American Army, which happened to be the Confederate Army, and we have displays regarding her father, Colonel Christopher Tompkins, a prominent businessman in Matthews and the first owner of record. So these shared experiences really help draw travelers to Matthews, adding to our tourism and reinforcing the county's unique character. We do ask that you allow us to continue to host the Cottage Museum so that visitors and residents can continue to connect with the history of our county.
Hi, I'm Martha McCartney. I live in Hedges, Virginia. The building, Tompkins Cottage, was built in 1820, and it's only about six inches from the ground. As a result, years of stormwater runoff from the crown of the asphalt on Brickbat Road and rising damp from sea level rise caused the building's floors to sag and its chimneys to begin deteriorating. And so the Society has committed, been committed to seeking grant funding so that we can elevate the building above the destruction of the stormwaters and runoff. We've also again set aside funds that could be used as a match, and we have been, we've sought for grants so far and are committed to seeking more. Please extend our lease so that we can continue this important work in historic preservation.
Thank you. So the, the agreement, the lease agreement that is in the packet is for a term of 25 years, and it will begin on January 31st, 2026, and it will end on January 31st, 2051.
Speakers are open to public hearing. Speakers are limited to one opportunity of three minutes each. Speaker shall open his or her remarks by giving their name and mailing address for the public record. Speakers cannot assign time and hole or impart to other speakers. Board members may not interrupt any speaker for questions or clarification. Speaker's remarks shall be only directed towards the topics of the public hearing. Materials submitted for review and for consideration by the board must be submitted to the clerk for entry into the proceedings.
And remind that it ends at 9:00.
And just to remind, our meeting ends tonight at 9:00 o'clock, and we'll reconvene on the 31st. So we'll open the meeting. Ms. Green, do you have anybody?
I'm not sure if Ms. Vicky Amatrat spoke in the group.
Thank you, I did already.
Okay.
Okay, that's it. Are there any speakers that would like to speak in favor? Any speakers that would like to speak against? Any, okay, sir, come on down. This is a reference to the Tompkins Cottage.
Oh, no, sir.
Yes, sir. Any speakers that would like to just make a statement in reference to the Tompkins Cottage? Yes, ma'am.
Sharon Frye, Port Haven. I just want to commend these people for doing a fine job and thank them. I think they need to be thanked.
Thank you, ma'am. So if we have no further comments, we'll close the public hearing. Board members, do we have a motion to approve the requests?
So do we. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we would approve the 25-year lease for Thompson's Cottage, and I also want to commend you all. Thompson's Cottage is a good draw for Matthews County. Thank you for what you did.
So we have a motion? Do we have a second?
No, I did move it, but.
I'm sorry?
I said I did move it the first time. It was okay.
Okay. Do we have a motion and a second? Do we have any discussion?
There's, I agree we should do it, but there's some, at least one minor typo, and I'm sure the county attorney can clear that up. So the lease with the typos corrected. Be my amendment to the motion.
Okay. Mr. Wallace, are you willing to amend your motion to correct the typo? And Ms.?
Yes, sir. No problem.
Ms. Phillips, reference your second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Green, could you roll call the vote, the board, please? Thank you.
Mr. Bowen?
Aye.
Mr. Wallace?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Doss?
Apologize, I was just looking at the time, so.
We should probably delay this.
Yes.
We'll readvertise for it.
Yeah. Give me just one second, if you wouldn't mind. Board members, the next public hearing, I believe, is going to take some time. I just now noticed what time it is. So we have four minutes. If we open this, if we open this, we'll have to pause it in the middle of it while it's open.
Can we see how many people want to speak?
How, how many people want to speak towards?
Two pages.
Okay.
Two pages.
Two pages.
We should probably move it to 31st.
Top five.
She's got two.
Stop all the blur. Let's see, let's do it.
Okay. If we could just take a, we're going to have to take a two-minute recess. I apologize. We'll take a two-minute recess, and then we'll do the public hearing for the, um...
It's automatic.
Oh, give me a two-minute recess.